We've got the councilman, which we're pleased to have with us. He has always been very kind with his time to spend it with us and to talk about things that some of the other politicians sometimes don't want to. And to take some of our heated questions and to stand in those winds of atrocity sometimes and give us the the truth about what's going on, at least as he sees it. So I'd like to open up to the council member for him to go ahead and take about ten minutes or so to talk about the good successes of last year and also what the his optimism is for this coming year and hopefully be able to give us some ideas about what what the future holds for us. Councilmember, you're on.
Great. Well, thank you. And again, I appreciate what you said about everyone volunteering their time. I think that's just important to emphasize and to show gratitude because this is an organization that's been around for a long time. And and all of you collectively, but also I know so many of you individually give of your time because you care about our community. And and I also care about the community and respect that. And that's why I always come whenever you ask me, we've been able to see you a couple of times this last year and as a group. But and and also enjoy meeting with you individually and as a group. So thought I would touch on a couple of the big, big ticket issues that are going on and then open it up for for questions to talk about anything that you want to talk about. As John said, you know, I've nothing's off limits. I'm always happy to talk and and give you my perspective and and let you know how, you know, how I can try to help because that's my, that's my goal as your councilperson, as your elected representative. It's how to make our community better. So I'm going to start with homelessness because that is the the big issue of the day. It has been for a while. We had the homeless count last night. We were out late in my office. We had over sixty people being deployed out of the office to work on the homeless count. But I want to share some of the progress we've made in tackling this crisis. We're now able to enforce some common sense restrictions on encampments, on certain encampments and offer shelter services and more mental health and drug addiction programs, which is really through the county. But these are programs that I've helped launch or support. Throughout my time, I focused on three basic things, housing, services and humane constitutional laws to keep our public rights of way clear while avoiding yet another lawsuit that further restricts the city's options. I've often said, and you've heard me say it here before, everyone should have the right to a roof over their head. But that doesn't mean that everyone has the right to reside on our public rights away. I've helped create cabin communities, which are sort of tiny homes within a a larger area, confined area, hotel conversions and other temporary housing that is better than life on the sidewalk and that is a transition for people to get off the sidewalks and ultimately to get stabilized and into permanent supportive housing. We've also have seven permanent supportive housing developments are in progress in the district right now. And we have a number of them already up and running. And while encampments are still a big issue in the district, we've had success in cleaning a number of them up. As as many of you know, and helping get people housed in that process. Specifically, you all have talked about some of these before at Vassarab between Khalifa and Oxnard, at the Del Valle Street between Shoup and Fallbrook. These are just a couple of examples of a long list of encampments that have been cleaned up and improved, making our sidewalks safer. As all of you know, for a while, we, you know, our biggest problem with terms of encampments was the underpasses. All the underpasses now, we've approached all the people who had been at those, offered them housing. And now though, all those underpasses are off limits to encampment. My team continues to work on clearing encampments and supporting people experiencing homelessness by getting them into temporary housing and permanent housing and working with the county to get them the services that they need. Happy to talk. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about about this. And this is, you know, with the mayor's new emergency order, there's a renewed vigor and energy with some of the additional money from U L A that's going to be coming through. There's a lot of new possibilities to make some real progress on homelessness this upcoming year. Homelessness is incredibly frustrating, but we can talk about some of those issues with Lhasa and the joint powers between the city and the county and and the other cities within the county. Other big issues I know you're going to want to talk about or hear about, you know, the the Rams or the Cronky Group coming to the Warner Center. There's a lot of unknowns regarding their plans. But I think it's exciting to see such unprecedented levels of investment in the Warner Center from a major organization like Cronky Group. It's all you, you know, you know, U R W formerly Westfield has and will continue to be a wonderful civic partner. Their Topanga Mall remains the jewel in our region. Even more so with their recent expansion investments along Victory Boulevard. There's just some fantastic stuff going in there. And while the Cronky Group has purchased the village, there is no indication that they will do anything to to make major changes to the village or to an area that has become an important asset to our community. It seems as if they purchased that almost as a protection for all their other investments, but they're not planning on making major changes to that that I know of. So far, they've invested over half a billion dollars in the Warner Center land. We know they intend on putting a practice facility on their property. John, you've met with them, you may know more than I do on this because they've been pretty you know, close to the vest on what their plans are. What we know, of course, is what the land has been entitled for. That you all were very involved in that. I was involved in that. The whole community was involved in that. Those entitlements have not changed. So that's the base of which they have to work from. If they want to do other things, they're going to have to go back through a a community process. Other big issues to touch on, you know, I think last time we were talking about copper wire theft. That's a big issue. Our lights have been, you know, this city has gone dark in many places because of so much of the the increase in price of copper wire. I know my street was out for like nine months. The impact it's had on our streets, our safety, it's important that we get those lights repaired, but we also harden the targets. Because you don't just want to repair these lights and have somebody steal the copper wire again. Toward that end, I mean, the city is moving, but not fast enough. So I appropriated a hundred thousand dollars out of the district discretionary funds specifically for streetlight repair in the district to make sure that our lights were working properly, properly. A little report from that Bureau of Street Lighting completed the following work. They, with that additional money, they they did over two hundred lights restored and fortified. They did over a hundred and seventy six door welds, which means with their pull box, they buried over a hundred and ninety pull boxes of the spans that were twenty four. So that's a big deal and that's above and beyond what they what they're doing on a regular basis. That's with the additional money that we gave them to to help get our area lit up because we know that that's an important safety issue for all of us. It's about resources, but also it's about reporting when you do see them out. And just like when you see graffiti and you see other things, it's incumbent upon us as a community to use the MyLA three one one app or call my office to report things. And I want to give props to one of your board members, Ari Cohen. He reported over forty streetlights that were out. And I'm happy to say that all forty of those lights, Ari, that you reported have been fixed. So good work there and reporting them and good that we finally got those fixed. More must be done, both proactively and in a reactive way. I've asked for a number of reports and I I've also recently become the budget chair for the city. This is, I haven't even had a a budget meeting yet, but I'm the new budget chair. And so certainly this will be an issue that I'm looking at to make sure that it gets properly funded. Other big issues, we have a big problem. You know, I mean, public safety is always an issue, but something that's not unique to us, but that is is a big problem in our area has to do with with traffic violence and 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 street, you know, street racing. This has been a bigger, a growing problem during COVID when streets were open. We got lots of complaints about this. And to target the rise in this kind of behavior behind the wheel, I've also allocated discretionary dollars to create a district specific street racing task force. This effort has been focused on the corridors where there have been exponential growth of speeding and organized street racing, like on the Van Alden Avenue between Glen Eagles and Ventura, Valley Circle Boulevard, Victory Boulevard and other various locations throughout the district as determined by L A P D. We've also been spending money on trying to make some of the physical changes to streets to make them harder to do those kinds of street racing, whether that's ballards or stop signs and those kinds of things. You want to both make it more difficult and you want to have enforcement. So we did the hundred thousand dollars for the first year. It was very successful in terms of preventing a lot of speeding deaths and and getting people you know, getting enforcement. And then we just recently re-upped that for this year with another hundred thousand dollars to police overtime specifically to deal with the street racing task force. So lots of, there's lots of community betterment projects. I mean, on on the street side, another issue was I worked with with Senator Stern and he was able to get Ryan's Law signed by the governor just recently. And that that's something I champion on the city level to get the city to support that legislation. It gives prosecutors the ability to charge a driver with a felony for participating in excessive speeding, sideshows, the street racing that results in a fatality. Street repairs, another big issue we need to deal with. There is a lot going on, obviously with the rains even more so. But just to give you a sense, just from, just for twenty twenty three. So just this year alone, this year, literally this year, January, the month of January, street service received over six hundred and twenty nine pothole requests. Of those pothole requests, they've so far closed five hundred and fifteen of them. There's eighty that are pending, waiting for repairs and thirty four locations that are waiting for their inspections. Obviously, the the with the rains, the potholes increase exponentially. But you need to deal with those. And again, part of that is getting not just the city doing its part, but people reporting it. You know, that's and it's real easy to report. And so I I want to deputize all of you to to use your MyLA three one one app and report those potholes, report graffiti, report bulky items, all the things that can improve our community of our quality of life. It starts with a a citizen of our area and a community member reporting it. So that's sort of the big picture. Other other just quick announcements, we're doing an emergency preparedness fair. Those of you who know me well know that that's a passion for me ever since the earthquake of ninety four, when I was working for Congressman Berman. And and that was my focus, bringing that fourteen billion dollars to our community and working with people to deal with the aftermath, obviously relevant, given the earthquake we had just this week or yes, last night, I think. We're doing, in in partnership with the chamber, we're doing this emergency preparedness fair at Pierce College on February twenty fifth from ten to one. And also other announcements, Sic La Via, exciting. We we finally got them to come back to the valley. That's going to be on February twenty sixth along Sherman Way. So why don't I stop there? I could go on for the entire time talking about all the great things, but I I want to make sure that I'm addressing the issues that you care about. And so I'm happy to open it up to questions.
Let's start with, since on this emergency preparedness, well, are you going to be doing anything to to help people learn CPR, for example, at that facility? Do you have any intentions perhaps in the future to schedule some type of free classes so people can get in and have that type of training?
Yeah, I know. It's it's a great question. We have the CERT program, which is through the fire department. And I partner with them all the time. We we prior to COVID, when when the offices were more open, we did, we would sponsor a CERT training, free train, free training for anybody who wants it. And we did that out of the office. We'll do that again. But right now, the offices are still not at full capacity, so we're not doing that yet. But but through the fire department, there is, anyone could sign up for the CERT program and get that training.
If that in mind is there, what councilman, what would you say is your, where's your best accomplishments this past year?
Oh, gosh, well, we have, there there's so many to go. I mean, we talked about some of the homeless homeless stuff already, which I think has been critical to getting us moving in that regard and working with the judge to try to get some of these laws in place. But in terms of some, some big picture items that we're moving in the district, we we just turned the ground on our ice skating rink, which is not in Woodland Hills, but it's in in Reseda. It's a major economic development project, twenty seven million dollar project. It's part of an economic development effort I have in in that part of the district, which is, I think, is it's, it was a huge accomplishment to get us to that phase. And we've got also just just north of here, we've got the Madrid Theater up and running. That's a ten million dollar facelift and creating a cultural park arts hub. And, you know, here in Woodland Hills, we, you know, the, we're, we're moving now on the Reimagine Ventura, which is very exciting. As you've probably seen, there's some paint already on the ground. And we've, you know, we've funded phase one and the immediate things in terms of the the phase one is the construction contract. That's a one point four million dollar award back in March with its and in this phase, we're seeing traffic signals, pedestrian signals, adding the reverse parking angle, the paint and ballards, some of the lane restrictions. And then phase two coming up, we'll have with we, in this year's budget, we have the budget to design it. And that's going to be the landscaping, the concrete work and the place making signs signage and and that kind of thing. And so that's very exciting. They're going to be standing up the traffic poles in the next couple of weeks. Resurfacing is also beginning now, so that should happen in the next couple of weeks. And and I know a number of you here on this call were very involved in that. So kudos to all of you and thank you for your engagement in that. But you, you mean?
We'll get some more detailed questions on some things. It's again, just sort of a, I'm looking at kind of a focus at this point. And again, just a a quick one, what what do you see your major challenge coming up for this year? What's really bugging you that keeps you awake at night that you've got to work on this coming year? That we can potentially be some some help with. Give me, give me one issue at least that's coming up on that one, then we'll get some a little more detailed questions.
Well, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of big thing. I mean, one, as the new budget chair for for the city, I'm worried about our, and this is not something necessarily that the the group can focus on. But as, you know, I I don't know if I told you, but the new can new committee assignments have come out. And I will still be, I was the public works chair, now I will be the vice chair there, so I'll still be very focused on that. But I'm also serving on a number of other committees and and chairing the budget committee. And, you know, our our economy is not, we're not in a recession, but there's a lot of talk about our economy slowing down. And I want to make sure that the city is able to function. I've I've played this role of the state when the city, when the state was on the brink of insolvency. And I was made the budget chair in my freshman year and and through the course of those five years, we were able to get the city and the state into surplus. But we're now hitting a time where the the city is going to have some financial issues. And and part of my job as a as a fiscal steward of the city is making sure that those that that challenge doesn't prevent us from doing the work that we need to do as a city. But the biggest challenge is going to be around homelessness is is clearly.
We'll certainly get to those questions. Like that's, that's like, that's the the big elephant in the room, if you will. I see that you brought on Mr. Galprin, who used to be our controller, who's come on to your staff, is that correct?
Yes.
How's he going to be able to help, help you in what you're doing on the budget committee? And also, how's he going to benefit us out here in the West Valley? Do you see some, some good roles for him? And I see just going to be available to you or is he going to be available to us and the and the public as well for information and to field some questions and and help us with some of the issues we got going on?
Well, as as a member of my team, he's available to you in that regard. He's, he's coming on board, you know. We were about to to lose him and a lot of institutional knowledge, institutional knowledge in the city of Los Angeles. And I was talking to him and and he was, we were talking about a lot of different things that need oversight in the city. And I'm like, look, I'm going to be the budget chair. You could help me with some of these things. And and obviously I can't take him on as the controller and as at his previously salary and all that. But he was, he was interested in 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 helping out on some of these critical oversight issues. Because as budget chair, I want to not just balance the budget, I want to focus on some oversight issues. And as the former controller, he has a unique insight into that. And given that we are turning over all three citywide electives, I thought if there is a chance to keep on one of those citywide electives to be helping us with institutional knowledge and and can work through me in my office, then that makes a heck of a lot of sense. Those of you know, I have tremendous respect for him and and his knowledge of our.
As you all know, he was very instrumental in in organizing the controller's office and provided huge number of reports and making sure that things were very transparent and allowing the general public to be able to see things at their fingertips. Is he going to be able to help with any of that in your office or is he really going to be off and doing some other things at this point?
No, absolutely. I mean, that that we're, we're, we're tapping him for, we're going to squeeze and dry up all of his all of his know how and knowledge and 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 get him to help both in the district specifically. Like, in fact, we were just talking yesterday about some of the the mapping things that we could do to help the district out. You know, he, he really focused on, and I was a big supporter of this, of open data and and mapping resources and and using my district as as the test pilot for some of that as we move forward. So we're talking about how do we map and create better visuals here in the third district for a lot of the resources that we have to to make it easier for people to engage in the process.
For those who've got to have some questions, if you raise your hands up, too, we'll get to you on those. I'm also curious, before we get to some of the the individuals, we've got a changeover in the city council. You've got some new members that have come in. There are some concerns that the council is beginning to go, go somewhat woke on us, going off in the direction that looks like it might create problems. Tell us about your personal experience of what it's like to be working with the new council. How do you feel that that's working, especially with the corruption issues that have been going on? Where where are you with the other members and being able to develop those coalitions? You know, here in the valley, we've only got, what, five of us out here, the council members? We get, we get sidelined by the votes when they go on to keep everything on the other side of the hill. How is a, how are those coalitions developing with you? How comfortable do you feel with it? And how's that working? I would expect to say it's fine, I'm going to be able to do it, but we know there's problems that are there. And and talk to us about that. Let us know what's going on in city council. It looks like it's a mess.
Yeah, no, and and, you know, folks who were elected who I didn't support, you know, I mean, you know, in the in the thirteenth district, I was very strongly supporting Mitch O'Farrell and and, you know, Hugo Soto Martinez won that seat. But, you know, that's happened. It may not have been how how I wanted it to happen. But I've reached out to, I've reached out to him and all the, all the members. And in fact, I've had, I've had lunch with all of the new members specifically because I know that politics is and getting things done is about relationships. When I was in the state assembly, I knew that. In fact, one of the things I vowed my first year in the state assembly was that I I would have either breakfast, lunch, coffee or dinner with every single member of the legislature. And there's a hundred and twenty. And I did that within my first year and that was very helpful to me in being able to get the record number of bills signed that I got signed. And it's the same philosophy in the in the city council. All of my new colleagues, whether whether I agreed with them or not in terms of the election, are my colleagues now. And so I've reached out, I'm forging relationships, even the new controller, who, you know, I was raising money for for his opponent. But I've reached out, I had a good lunch with him. We've been talking and I'm, I'm going to work with folks to get good things to happen. And I've already, we've already seen that happen to some extent, you know. There have been some, you know, very, there have been some difficult votes that have happened that were, I've been able to work to create compromises. And that's, and that's important. That's how you get things done. Yes, the council certainly as a whole has has moved to the left with some of these new elections. But I think that there is, there is a lane for folks to be practical and and to work with everybody.
Let's take, let's take an issue that's going to affect all of us. As you all know, the state capital has been through some of the winter bills and S B nine, ten and some of the other ones have been just basically gutting the our abilities to have local control over our developments that are here. And and nothing seems to be done with the, from the city of L A to try to control what's going on up there and to tell them, you know, to to sit back and let us do what we need to do here. We've done a very good job with the twenty thirty five specific plan, which are you spearheaded and a lot of our members spearheaded too. Are you working with or can you work with the present council to form a coalition basically to fight what they're doing up in Sacramento and educate them that while there's maybe some smaller cities and other cities that are not doing what they're supposed to do, we are doing that here? Are you willing to try to get that coalition together to fight Sacramento and say, leave us alone? And 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 cut back on some of these things because some of this development is going to destroy our single family homes. And we'll, we'll talk about that as we get into some of the other questions here too, from some of the individuals.
Well, I mean, as you know, you mentioned S B nine, S B ten. You know, we we fought hard on that. We did not win. There was a a vote in the council about that. It was a, you know, we we went formally on record as a, not just individually as members, but as a council opposing, opposing S B nine, S B ten. We have a lobbyist in Sacramento who works for the city. We had them working on opposing that, but that obviously passed regardless.
But Bob, you know, we never saw, excuse me, council, I, I, forgive me, I'll, I'll call you by Bob from sometimes I don't mean any disrespect.
Of course, you're welcome.
The, we, we never saw that I'm aware of any of the council members, yourself or anybody else, going up to Sacramento, getting in front of some of those committees and saying, stop this. And and I think that that, you know, it's good to have the lobbyists that are up there doing things. It's good to have a vote that's going to be there. That's just stuff that's on paper that gets pushed in front of somebody's nose. And Weiner and the other group up there is going to do whatever they want to do. You're up in Sacramento, you were there, you know what that's like for that. You know what the politics are up there. If you've got somebody that's coming from the local community that's there, a council member, other people backing up from the community and coming up and testifying, I get a feeling you get a different result from that. Am I wrong with that? And and is it something that that you just can't do or that you just won't do?
No, certainly we do that. But the but the reality is we have, we have local elected officials here. We have our assembly member, we have our state senator. And they are the ones who represent us in Sacramento and they are the ones who have a vote in Sacramento. When I was in the state assembly, you know, I would rely on my contacts and community within the community. And frankly, if the city council came up, you know, and and said something, I I would listen, but I'd also know that, I mean, I'm, I have those direct relationships as well. Just like you all meet with our state assembly member and our state senator and and, you know, we can, I think it is a powerful thing for the city to go on record as we did and vote on on those issues. And I'll tell you, it it wasn't without consequence. I'll, I'll share with you something like after we voted against S B nine and S B ten, Tony Atkins, who was the the Senate pro tem is it was a, is a dear friend, but she, she texted me, was very upset that I was speaking out against against her, you know, her measure. And and, you know, it's not like folks don't know that. But, you know, they're, they're on a whole other set of pressures and they're, you know, they're trying to deal with the issues that they're trying to deal with. So, yes, we can do that, but but as I said, you know, our primary role is to deal with city issues. And yes, we can have a voice on 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 everything and I'll speak out on everything. But but that's where the main focus is, which is how do we impact the city?
Well, you're answering some questions. How about, you've got a question, go ahead.
Yeah, councilman, let me just interject. You said that, you know, you tend to the city stuff and that our, you know, Jesse and and Henry are supposed to be tending to the the state stuff and representing us. The the truth of the matter is neither of them have met with anybody down here. They've, they haven't tested the waters. They are not to be found trying to get them to speak to the, to the the populace via who or just to come out and talk to everybody has been very frustrating. They don't represent us. They go up there and they do what they want and not what's necessarily good for this community or what's good for the city of Los Angeles.
Everybody's kind of saying to with that, Bob, is you might be able to be helpful on kind of wrangling them in, if you will, and and forcing them to get together in a, in a group, maybe with the three of you and sit down with some of the community leaders and sit down and talk about some of these positions, do it as an open forum or whatever. Because they just really have not been that responsive. You have been, but they have not been.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to help make those introductions and try to get them to, and certainly urge them to to meet with you all. I certainly met with you all when I was in the state legislature and, you know, we've been having these meetings for many, many years and and I I'm happy to help make those introductions and try to, try to urge that to happen. Because I do think it's important that all of your elected officials connect with you. I mean, that's, that's that's sort of rule number one as a, as an elected official.
Let me bring up some things about the Rams. You mentioned about the Rams before and we have met with them from the homeowners organization as well. And your comments earlier about that things are kind of up in the air is very much true. We don't really know. I know that I did speak with them not too long ago and they did indicate that the plans are not being worked on yet. And so while they've been quiet about stuff, we always were worrying that they were doing stuff behind closed doors with either you or somebody else that trying to come up with something, but they really have put it on the back burners. And so there's stuff I believe that will be coming up in the future, especially this year. And we're looking forward to working with you and with them as well to try to make that into a great complex and and turning out to be a, an increase for for the valley. And we understand also that they're not doing anything different with the village as well. There's no indication of them purchasing the the Topanga Plaza. They do have the Anthem Building and that apparently is going to be torn down. I think that you are aware of that as well. But we're looking forward to working with that because there's things we need to be doing in the community become very, very important and sometimes getting down to the street level on things become extremely important too. I know Keith, Keith Klein had some things that he wanted to ask and some questions. Keith, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great, thank you, John. And, you know, props also to the homeowners organization. The neighborhood council enjoys partnering with you and the chamber on and the council office at making this such a great area to live and so forth. So thanks. Good evening, council member, Bob. First off, I want to thank you for your motion to get Sacramento to modify the Brown Public Meetings Act to allow neighborhood councils the flexibility to continue to meet virtually. As you know, virtual meetings have allowed As you know, virtual meetings have allowed for greater participation of the public and board activities. And I want to give a shout out to your Woodland Hills Field Deputy Seth Samuels for working with me as the area NC rep to respond to the many serious road and drainage issues here in the spaghetti streets of, uh, the Gerard Track and Woodland Hills. And, um, just this week, we got a road sign balled installed, uh, that should stop vehicles from getting stuck on the steep gourd points at Alham and Camello. And thanks Seth for that because for thirty years I've been working on it and it took until this week. And I think Seth's involvement to finally get it, uh, finally put through. So props there. And the area residents are also grateful, uh, for the sandbags that have been deployed in the area. However, sandbags are too little, too late and do nothing to resolve the systemic road and drainage system failures that we have here in the area that are causing danger to people and, uh, damage to property. And, uh, unfortunately, the sandbags, uh, don't prevent landslides and flooding in the area. And I guess as John has displayed up on this sign there, you can see where road failures on Alham are causing landslides and flooding that flows down to Topo, Topo Chico that goes down to El Zavir. And we have neighbors that are receiving special assessments for problems on their property that are the direct result of actions and inactions on the part of the city to maintain its property and do its job properly. And that's just not fair. I worked with Seth, obviously this term, and it was Allison and Tim and Andrew and Michael in your office. You know, previously, and I can go back and name all the folks on Dennis Ein's staff and I can go back to Joy, all the way back to Joy Picas and her staff who've given us in this area a mix of excuses and false hopes. So now that you're chair of the budget committee and vice chair of public works, what can you do finally to end the city's neglect in this area?
Thank you. Well, I mean, neglect is a strong word. I know certainly it hasn't been as much as we want. And there's a, there's a resource issue out there. I saw the pictures of Al Hamra as, as you probably know, and, and my team worked very hard over there. In fact, I was just out there right after the rains, uh, uh, or actually in between the two rains and I posted a whole video about, about what was happening there and, and the neighbors putting the sandbags there was great. And I went out there with the crew to, to make sure that they were dealing with that tree that fell and they made sure that it wasn't going to continue to fall. But, you know, th- those repairs are being made. Uh, you know, you mentioned, you know, what can we do? One, one of the biggest things that I have done and, and I would put it to your, John's earlier question about, about major accomplishments was, was getting a lot of our streets that were out of public use put back into public use. One of the reasons why for so many years, a lot of our streets have been failed and, uh, was because back in the nineteen thirties and nineteen thirty six, uh, a lot of these streets in Woodland Hills more than West Valley, more than anywhere else in the city, were taken out of public use, were essentially made into paper streets. And the city refused to fix those streets other than making them passable because they weren't legally the city's responsibility. And there was a, if the city were to have taken them back into public use, they would have had to spend millions of dollars bringing them up to code. And in sometime, in some ways, not in a way that the community would want. You know, expanding the street onto people's private property, uh, putting in curves where you don't want them, all sorts of things. That problem had been kicking around for eighty years. Uh, and I really focused in on how we can get creative to get those streets put back into the public sphere. Uh, and we did something that they said couldn't be done, but we were very creative and we basically rescinded the earlier laws back in the nineteen thirties that took those streets out of public use. Which going through some legal rigor or meant that, and I don't know if you are getting, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
I am getting, I can't seem to figure out where it's coming from. If somebody has an idea where that's coming from.
I can, I can just continue speaking over, but I, I don't know if anybody can even hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you fine. I'm, I'm trying to see from this end if I can figure out where it's coming from.
Sounds like it's, it sounds like it was your office, actually.
Uh, it might've been, it might've been your, your background there, Bob. I'm not really sure, but.
Oh, I'm, I'm in a quiet, I'm in a quiet room by myself, so. No noise coming from my room. What's that?
It seems to have stopped.
Okay. Great. I, I, I lost a little bit of my train of thought, but, but essentially I was talking about one, a, a very big accomplishment, which was to get those, you know, three hundred and something streets that were out of public use and not being repaired, put back into the public uh, roles essentially. And now we are, we are slowly going through that process and, um, you know, of making sure that those streets now get repaired the way that they should. Sending them rather than, than taking them back into the roles. That meant that we didn't have to do the expensive and, and sometimes undesirable efforts of, of bringing them to code because a lot of these hillside streets, community does not want them up at code. And the other thing is, uh, Bureau of Engineering is working with UCLA on an analysis of the hillside, uh, streets across the city, something that we asked them to do. Uh, and I think that's going to be very helpful once we get that report. You know, and we're trying to make the, help the property owners in this regard, uh.
It looks like, I mean, a number, number of the roads, I love the hillsides there too. In fact, just across the street from, uh, from that one in the hammer. The, um, the problem is these roads are substandard up here. It looks like the joke was that old Gord Miller would tell us that, you know, these roads up here were really were, were plowed out by, by horses and mules and the dirt was kind of thrown over the side and nobody really compacted everything. They put, you know, asphalt on top of it. I know when I was up here, back from the thirties, nobody had, had, uh, resurfaced the roads up here until probably about fifteen years ago. And it was after the work with city council and, uh, with your office too, to get some of those things done up here. But, um, I think we're in substandard roads. I think we've got some problems in the hillsides, especially when you get this much rain of some of these roads are pouring the water down into these private lots and they're causing them to erode. And something needs to be done about that at some point in time. But, uh, I, I think as we go through this, we'll, we'll take a look and, and, you know, see what things we can do to help, help you spot some of those too. Let's talk about some of the, the homeless issues before we, we get away from this. Um, we know certainly the, the eight one eight facility. Uh, we went over and took a look at that. It's pretty much almost boarded up at this point. What's happening with, um, with the extended care, uh, I'm sorry, that the extended care, the, um, extended stay location, the city is supposed to be purchasing. Where's that at? Have they, has that been purchased? Is that going through? Is, where, where are we at with all of that? Cause that's across from Taft.
Yeah, now the, the, and, and just to refresh folks, the, the eight one eight is, the, both of these hotels were purchased under Project Home Key, which is a state funding. Uh, the county had on its list, the eight one eight hotel. And, um, and I really was the one to push them to make that for families only. And they accepted that, uh, and that, which is, which is great. So the eight one eight is specifically, it's transit, it will be transitional housing for families. The extended stay was on the city's list, the, when the city uh, was applying, you know, asking all the hotels in the, in the, in the city, putting out a, a request for any hotels that would be interested in, um, basically being bought out through Project Home Key. The owners of the extended stay put forward a deal with four different extended stays. One is up in, in the twelfth district, just north of us. One is obviously the one on, on, uh, Ventura and there's, there's two others in the city as well. And they did, they basically put forward a four-part deal. And when that came to council, um, uh, especially because I was worried about it being its proximity to both Taft and to the other eight one eight. Uh, I put in a requirement that that would be specifically for seniors. Is a much lower impact, uh, on the community. Uh, and so that, that one is designated specifically for seniors and not as a temporary housing, but as permanent housing. So that is going to be basically a, a, an affordable housing, a certain percentage of it will be for, um, for, uh, uh, formerly homeless. So, so it's just, it's, it's a hundred and forty-six units uh, with a hundred percent senior designation. And fifty of the units, about thirty-five percent are, are for, for seniors who have been chronically homeless and have section eight vouchers. And then the rest of the units, the vast majority are for low income seniors. Um, you know, and emergency housing vouchers. The exact number of emergency housing vouchers isn't exactly known. And the, the, what is known at this point is that the VOA, um, is the organization that is contracted. There was an RFP with the city to see which service provider would ultimately run that facility. VOA won that process. They hold several contracts with the city to provide homeless services. Uh, they also operate a navigation center and, uh, which is different in the harbor area. They have a, a bridge home in South LA. They run a, a Hollywood facility. Anyway, so they're, they're a known commodity. They also help administer our emergency renter assistance program. So they're, they're ultimately going to be running it. Uh, my hope is to get them to come to you as a group. Uh, in terms of the, to talk about what that's going to look like. But a lot of the details haven't been worked out on that.
What about, what about this large facility? They're looking at putting it over on Taft High School, basically just to the east of it on the, on the side streets back there in residential areas. Are, are you in favor of that, opposing that, or is it just going to happen by a matter of right? Uh, there, there, I mean, this stuff is right close to Taft. It's kind of pretty tough.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, I'm happy to get into that. To, um, maybe we should finish up on the extended stay and I'm happy to move.
I'm, I'm sorry, Bob. I thought you had, my, my apologies.
No, no, no worry. Um, again, um, I, I'll talk about anything you want to talk about, uh. But the extended stay, what was the, I was saying on that, uh, oh, the one thing I wanted you to know too is one of the things that, that I really want to make sure that there is deep community involvement in, in the process. And, and as I did with the cabin communities that are located in Reseda and Tarzana, uh, I'm establishing a, a, I, I established there a cabin community advisory committee. I'm going to do the same thing for these two facilities, getting folks from the community and, and including the people who've been most vociferously opposed to it. You know, that's what I did with the cabinet communities. Setting up regular meetings before it ever gets populated. And, uh, with, not just with me, but with the service provider. Uh, in the case of the eight one eight, it's Hope of the Valley. In the case of the VOA, it's, 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 and extended say it's VOA. And have those meetings before, during and after that it is up and running so that we can preempt problems, not just react to problems. And, um, I have found that to be very effective with the cabin communities. Uh, in fact, we went from meeting, you know, at one point weekly to monthly to quarterly. And now, now, uh, one of the cabin communities were meeting biannually. The other one, we're still doing quarterly. But it's, it's a good tool to get people connected. Uh, now, you're referring, the other question was about the, uh, Del Moreno, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, and this is a site, as you mentioned, it's across from Taft High School. It's currently, it's developed with a single family home. Uh, and there's a, a proposal for a sixty unit apartment complex with five units reserved for very low income veterans, as I understand it. The project was put on hold because of litigation. Uh, but the litigation, uh, was settled and the case processing now moves forward. It's not something that I have control over as a council person. You know, uh, in entitlement, it's required. Uh, according to the court case, it's required to allow multifamily project at the site because it's zoned for single family. The city, the city wanted the applicant to file a zone change. Uh, we, that's, we pushed them for that to allow the project. Uh, and the applicant wanted the case to be processed under what's called the state density bonus laws that would only require a conditional use permit for waivers of development standards. So.
And we're, we're back, we're back with that problem with what the state is doing on trying to control and taking away the abilities of you and the community to be able to, to determine self-determination about what we're going to have in our communities. So that's.
That, that's exactly right because we wanted to have them do a zone, you know, we, we basically said, no. You, you cannot do this unless you do a zone change. Um, and you got to apply for that. And then they, they went to court and said, no, we don't need to do that. We just need to do, uh, under the state bonus, state density bonus laws. Courts have ruled and they ruled against the city.
Well, um, we've also got, you mentioned before about, um, uh, you, you're quite clear that, uh, everyone's got a, a right to have a roof over their head, but not everybody wants that that's out there on the streets. What are we doing with the people that, you know, along back, uh, just south of the Ventura freeway between, uh, Cano, between Canogan to Soto, back by Trader Joe's, whole bunch of RVs that are back there. Uh, Betty was pointing out to us, uh, from whatever questions, there's a lot of graffiti that's showing up there. We also got a whole bunch of encampments that are up along, um, on Owen's Mouth, just south of Irwin. It's right there by, uh, by, um, Ruth Chris. I mean, that's, that's a major encampment up along that, that whole area, along the sidewalks that are there. What's being done with that? You've, we've been very good about getting them out from underneath the, a lot of the freeways. But we have all these other encampments and it seems like a lot of these people just do not want to go into housing. They just want to be out in the street and, and camping out. What's, what's going to happen with this? What, what can you do and what are you planning to do?
Yeah, no, and, and, you know, as you know, we, we, we work with what's out there. We try to do, we try to get people housed and when appropriate, when legal, we can create a forty-one eighteen spot and then make an area off limits. As you mentioned, there's currently in Woodland Hills, there's probably uh, three major encampments, I guess you'd say. There's the Clarendon between Peralta, Al Hamra and, and Comercio. There's, there's the encampment that starts, uh, at Peralta, continues north on Peralta toward Clarendon. But you mentioned specifically the, the trader, you know, right that spot, uh, behind Trader Joe's. I guess that's the way everybody knows it. I went out there, uh, week, two weeks ago, you know, we're, we're doing comprehensive cleanups there, which is one way, uh, to try to make sure that area doesn't become full of debris and gets, and doesn't become uh, as big of a, of a, of a problem. Uh, those recently have been halted because of the weather, the, you know, you can't do those kind of cleanups during rain. You can't do them if it's less than fifty degrees. There's a bunch of parameters, uh, that out, outline that. There are folks there that will accept housing and there are folks there that won't.
This is where the problem, I mean, that, there's people, there's thousands upon thousands of people that drive by the Ventura freeway and look over the side and see that's what we've got in Woodland Hills. This is our, kind of our broken window, if you will. It, it's, it's, it's saying, we just don't, we just don't take care of our community. We won't take care of the people in the community. And they can see it's very visible to people who are driving by. And it seems like they're, you know, why at that location? Why, why aren't we doing something to be able to, to move them or provide a different location to it to where it doesn't have this, this, this appearance to it, at least that's attracting others into the community. You know, it's an attractive nuisance now at this point, uh, of what's there. And it's, it's unsightly, it's unhealthy. Uh, there are people there that just don't want to have any help from any things and we're kind of stuck with it. And unless the council can do something about it and, and it's, it's, it's frustrating, it's frustrating.
Well, of course it is. And, 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 uh, you know, I share that frustration and, and the folks that are at that encampment, a number of them were moved from, they were the folks who, you know, were previously at San Luis, who, when, when we made that forty-one eighteen, some of those folks were able to go into housing and some of them ended up moving over there.
They're just moving, we're moving from one place to another around.
That doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem, right?
No.
So you, 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 and as you know, the courts have been very, you know, have been very difficult. You cannot force, you can't put someone on a bus and force them into a, um, a treatment program or a housing program. You can't build a place out in Palmdale and move people there. They can get on a bus and come right back and be where they want to be. So the question is, how do you work within that to offer the people housing that they would accept? Uh, and that's a big part of it. And part of what we're doing, all of these different options that we're trying to create that I was talking about earlier, including the permanent supportive housing are ways to get people, uh, out. I, I talked to, I mean, I, I was just at that site, as I mentioned, and I talked to as many of the, I can't say everyone because not everybody was there or answered, but I, I went through and talked to uh, everyone that I could at that encampment to see why they were there and what it would take to get them out. I mean, I personally go out and do this. We have lots of workers that do this. We have my staff that does this. There is the, the Hope of the Valley teams. There's the county mental health teams. There's a million different teams. But as your council member, I take this issue so seriously that I go out there myself as well. And I go out there with these teams, um, And I go out there with these teams um to try to. Put extra pressure to get these areas cleaned up, which is also why we see the results that we do. We have a lot of positive results. Uh but sometimes it results in people moving from one place to another and that doesn't solve anything.
The questions here and the Q and A's, uh what did you find doing the count? What what was your take? Uh first of all, is it finished, which I I think it's still going up a couple of days, but what did you find? What 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 uh? Is anything about that count that has changed your mind or changed your focus at all? What was the result of the count?
The the count doesn't change any focus. The count is a is a metric, right? It's not, it's not very deep. It's uh.
I know, but you but you were out there. You got to talk to some of the people and see what was there.
Oh, I I didn't talk to anybody during the count. During the count, you just, you drive around and you count the people that you see. But I go out there regularly doing outreach and I was telling you, I could tell you, as I was starting to say, even on right behind Trader Joe's. I went out and spoke to the majority of people that were there. Uh and I asked and I asked each and every one of them, when I spoke to them. Why are you here? What, you know, how did you get here? What would it take to get you uh housed? What are the services that you need? And and I got a variety of different answers. Uh but some of the folks I talked to, uh a number of them were seniors. Uh you know, would he would very well, that you know, I said, would you, if if that extended stay, if you were able to get into that, would you stay there? Uh and they said, yes, because it's in their area, you know, they're they're all there for a particular reason. There was one woman I was talking to there. It was very frustrating because I helped get her housed. Um about six months ago, she had been at the Corbin Underpass and she's there with her dog. And um and she has a a open wound and is a very sad situation. And I said, what happened? We had you housed at this uh, you know, this uh group, this group housing project and it was, you were there and and. She explained to me that she was there, but she cares so much about her dog. Her dog needed a um. Uh an operation of some sort and it would have cost eighteen hundred dollars and and. And so she made the choice to not pay the um the rent and to instead pay for her dogs. Um you know, medical care. And I mean, I'm pulling my hair out. I said, well, I wish you would contacted someone because we would have, if I'd known that that's what would have kept you there, I would have found the money. To pay for your dogs that, you know, veterinarian care. Um because now this person that we worked so hard on six months ago. To get housed, it was back on the street. Um and it was because, because they were in that unfortunate situation where they they were choosing between. Their rent and their their pet that they that that is really their life. I mean, they they care. This is, this is an animal that is very, you know, this person is very attached to for for. Appropriate and good reasons. Uh so there's situations like that that come up where you, you know, you you scratch your head and think, well, if the system worked better. That person wouldn't have fallen through those cracks. Uh there are other folks who are. You know, say that they were in a in in the tiny home, but they they didn't like that and they they preferred living in the R V. That's a problem, right? And so how do you, how do you got to deal with with that situation? So every person that you encounter. Uh has a different reason. There's one person I talked to who's clearly mentally ill and is just not making rational choices. And this is also the issue with the county, because the city does not have any. Mental health or drug addiction programs. All of that is run through the county. All of our human services are run through the county. And I I've had a frustration, I've expressed a lot, I've expressed to this group that we we often feel like the county is not. Providing the placement for these folks who are not appropriate for the city shelters, but it shouldn't be on the street. But we're with the new mayor and uh her working well with this new county and with the the Judge Carter case. That the county agreement is being renegotiated and I hope in a good way, and I've been having a lot of conversations with Judge Carter. To try to help make that happen in a positive way to get the county to take on more of that responsibility.
A good, a good joint powers agreement might work out well with the city and county on that stuff too.
I mean, but Lhasa is a joint powers between the city and the county.
I guess that's that's true on it.
It's just was a joint powers that was put in well before, you know, years and years ago and and is has a lot of structural issues. But there's a new C E O for Lhasa, so I hope that that, and I'm gonna meet with her very soon. I hope that that will help as well.
Uh Andrew, you've got some questions. You've been unmuted. You had to ask your questions.
Uh good evening. Hi, uh hi, Mr. Blumenfeld, Blumenfield. Uh I had a couple of questions. Uh you brought up a point that actually is connected to one of my questions. You mentioned about um street racing. I came across a flyer. I don't know how many valley traffic officers are in the valley, but there's a. It's advertised as a mass retirement party. We're losing ten valley traffic officers. I don't, I'm not sure if that's all of them. But it brings me to my second point in that. I got some inside information. Um we're losing two hundred officers this month alone. We're averaging fifty a month we're losing to uh hiring twenty to twenty five new recruits a month. So we're gonna be down over a thousand officers within the next couple of months, with actually by the end of this month. So what are you gonna do to ensure that we don't lose what we have? And the resources don't get shifted elsewhere like they have in the past.
Well, I I'm not sure what you're referring to, resource being shifted in the past. Uh I I know people. And and we could talk about the, you know, what happened in twenty twenty. People talk about that as some defunding and I've always taken issue with that because. You actually look at the numbers, the year that we cut every department, the police were cut by point oh three percent uh less than every other department. But I've been a big believer in in we need to have more police out here and. We are, we we do have a real problem with recruitment and the number, you know, last year we authorized more police. Then they could literally hire um in the time. So it's not because the not the funding isn't there. So what is it, what does it take? Uh I've been working with uh with Chief Moore and and we put together something to. Uh up the number to create a signing bonus to allow them to use some of the the. Funding that they have. It took a legislative action, but we successfully did that. Uh so that they could, they could have additional funding for uh for a signing bonus. So doing everything that they can to try to get to get more recruits. Uh and to make it more uh appealing for those who to come to L A P D versus other places. Because it is a problem we're not just having here in L A, but uh really it's across the country. They're having trouble. Uh recruiting new officers and I mean, L A P D is still the gold standard and folks would want to work here, but. Um you know, we need to, we need to figure out creative ways, both signing bonuses, making sure that salaries are. Are uh competitive, authorizing enough funding to have uh the officers that we need. Uh but you know, it's not a question of the authorized funding anymore. It's a question of literally, how fast can we recruit people?
Uh but kind of honing in on the question for the valley traffic officers. I mean, those are the officers that we rely on to keep, you know, street racing capped. Uh you know, to keep the streets safe from all everything that's been going on and you mentioned it, but if we're losing. All these valley traffic officers at once, I I'm sure they're replacing them, but. I just don't, it doesn't make sense how we're gonna have coverage for what you want to do and what you're proposing.
Well, the 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 street racing task force is is through over, you know, because it's coming out, it's not out of the general police budget, it's out of. Uh the discretionary funding, that goes to overtime. So uh it it will work in the sense that, you know, there are lots of officers who are interested in uh overtime pay. So when you, when you fund something, you can't obviously, this is not the solution for the overall problem. You can't. Increase the police department by increasing the overtime, but for the specific street racing task force. That is a a an overtime initiative above and beyond the regular service. So um. You know, but there are other ways to try to deal with speeding too. Uh there is a a bill in the legislature. Uh uh Assemblywoman Laura Friedman has a bill dealing with automated speed enforcement. Um you know, it's something like that could help with our speeding issues as well and and. And there may be lots of opinions about that across the board, but but we need to think creatively. Yes, we need to have the officers that we need, but we also need to to get creative.
I think also, um as far as the um uh enforcement issues out here in the valley too, there's been a lot of. Notifications on uh the Ring app and on some of the next door. There's a lot of. Attempted break-ins, a lot of people are having stuff stolen off of the front porch, a lot of cars being broken into. Uh we know there's been some major assaults and carjackings that have been up at the Topanga Plaza area. Um uh do we have enough um enough uh police enforcement out here to begin with? Or is it something that is it isn't a finance issue? Do we just have to, we have to deal with what we've got? We just don't have enough?
Well. It's it's not a a finance issue at the moment, because as I said, we literally have authorized more hiring than is being done. So um you know, the 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 bottleneck is right now not the the financing issue. It's the, it's how fast can you hire? The deployment issue is um, you know, specifically taken out of the hands of of elected leaders and appropriately so and and. Is the, you know, the police chief sets the deployment. Uh throughout the city where the needs are. When when crime spikes in one area, they move resources to that area. Obviously. Every division has its base amount of folks um doing the work, but then then it's. The police chief's role is to is to figure out how to deploy those and. Uh and that's, and they they do that effectively. I I meet with them regularly about these issues. And uh work with our senior lead officers and and try to push for resources in our community as much as we can.
Uh gonna get some more questions. It looks like Christian, you've been unmuted. If I pronounced your name correctly, go ahead and with your question.
Thank you very much. Um we have been having an issue for a couple of months now in our neighborhood. Where Verizon installed a cell tower. On one of the streetlights without asking anybody, excuse me. Or informing any of the neighborhood, anybody in the neighborhood. And uh recently we noticed that there's an other one uh in about a thousand feet away from us. And the main issue is that they install these uh cell towers right next to uh two story uh buildings. And the uh cell tower height is exactly the height of the second story where usually the bedrooms are. And uh these towers are about twenty five feet away from the wall of those houses. And people are concerned because there are signs on these cell towers saying that if somebody get, uh needs to get close to them. They need to call a phone number listed. So we we need help with this to figure out what we can do about this, because. As far as I know, Verizon was supposed to inform people about this and uh. The uh people who own the houses right next to these cell towers did ask the workers when they installed them and they were told that they were gonna be street lights.
Well, there there's a couple of issues here. You know, certain cell towers, you know, need a conditional use permit, so there should be a public hearing. In that regard, uh but the the federal government has preempted local government from. Uh. Not permitting cell towers based on health reasons. So the federal government has basically said that. Um you know, you have, that has basically limited the local government's ability to. Say no to a cell tower uh in an extreme way. Now, we have been successful before, so please contact my office with. When we've had some of these situations where we just reach out to Verizon and some of these other folks and say, is there any way you could do it differently? Uh my team has been able to make that happen successfully a number of times. But a at the end of the day, we don't have the kind of leverage uh that I'd love to have. We we have a co-location program on streetlights. With the Bureau of of Street Lighting, but uh but in terms of being able to say no because because of the health reasons. That's explicitly prohibited in federal law.
And that's been going on back all the way back to the nineties from my personal experience with that too. It's just, just the health reasons is not a reason to stop it at all. Doesn't work on that one. Um Donald, you've got a um, you can be unmuted. You got a question? Donald, you're unmuted. Go ahead. Uh maybe not. Donald, do you have a question? Donald Saverson, do you have a question, sir? Yep, there you go. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, um my my question has to do with going back to the police department. Um in in speaking with several officers, a senior lead officer in our area. Part of the frustration they have is that it seems like there's a revolving door for some of the criminals that are being arrested, whether it's. Street racing, street takeovers, smash and grab robberies, et cetera. And I see this being discussed quite regularly. On the West Hills, Woodland Hills, Crime Busters, Crime Stoppers website. It just seems like. The police will will bag somebody and arrest them, but then it's a revolving door and they're kicked right back out on the street to do. What they're doing. What 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 can be done about that to to stop that?
Well, unfortunately, I, you know, I'm not, I don't, I hate to punt to other levels of government, but. Uh you know, the city doesn't set that. Those penalties, you know, you're you're referring to a lot of the issues with uh Prop one oh nine, two uh forty seven. Uh you know, state propositions that were voted on that change uh what level of federal felony is versus a misdemeanor. Uh from whatever it was, four hundred to nine hundred bucks. I don't remember the exact numbers on that, but uh. And and so it's a frustration that I I share and that I know that our a number of our police officers are, you know. Concerned about uh because. You know, when when they arrest somebody or stop someone, they, you know, they don't want to just spend all that time booking them and taking them in and only to see them. Uh you know, out the next moment, but some of these things are cumulative and they're still, you know, and they're obviously. Not all crime has been changed in that regard, but it but I understand the frustration. Uh but unfortunately, as a as a city official, I cannot change felonies and misdemeanors and and the the sentences on on. On these issues. I mean, that that really comes to state and federal law.
Well, I I can understand some of that. However. I would hope that the city council and the mayor has a working relationship with the L A District Attorney. Excuse me, the L A County District Attorney, so that it can put some pressure on him where there are discretionary policies that have been initiated. That can negatively impact the crime stopping capability within the city.
Yeah, we have some, I mean, when when uh Gascón was talking about not having hate crimes. Uh you know, or lowering the the, you know, the penalty on hate crimes. I mean, I I. Made a big stink about that and, you know, was able to get him to reverse that, but that's, that's also a, you know, we have very little. Control over that. When some, there there is some control over some of the issues with the city attorney um in terms of. Like a a ver- a variety of misdemeanors that people, you know, that are serious, you know, like domestic violence and. You know, one of the reasons I I was happy in this, in the general election that that. Uh Heidi Soto Felstein won versus um fossil guilt was that. He had said he wasn't gonna prosecute any misdemeanors for six months, which I thought was was outrageous and um would have. You know, kept domestic violence, folks not being prosecuted, all sorts of things and and fortunately, uh she won and she. She is prosecuting and and doing what she can as a as our city attorney.
Uh Nicole, you've been unmuted. I think you go ahead and ask a question too.
Okay, uh so I'm from the Bon Vivian uh homeowner association. And I have a, it's more of a comment slash question. Uh it's about the homeless shelter being uh that we're. It's about all the homeless shelters that we are putting in Woodland Hills. My comment is. Are we enabling the encampment by not placing limitations on whether on. By allowing all the encampments on the streets? Like, is there a way that we could possibly place more um restrictions and. To prevent the encampments? Because I know in Orange County, um my family has properties there. There's no homeless encampments whatsoever because they they have stricter laws. On um allowing homelessness and encampments on the streets. And so my my thing is. Do you think that we're encouraging people to come into the city to to camp and to to live? And at the same time, then we we're providing them shelters, so it's like a, it's like a never ending cycle. And should we be looking for other ways to try to help people that actually are from the city to shelter them? But at the same time, try to prevent this from um keep, keep uh, try to prevent, prevent um. Prevent this from uh it just, you know, more people coming into the city and more encampments.
I I mean, I'm not exactly sure the question, you know.
So my question is, um like right now, there's still encampments. Um why aren't we doing anything to prevent people from. Living on the streets? Um you know, why can't we say this is off limit?
I I think we we. I I think we we are, and I I've been a big proponent of of trying to do that, I was the author of forty-one eighteen, which is. The um the legislation that allows us to make certain areas off limits to encampments after you've offered people. Housing uh or services and housing. And uh and that has been very effective in the sense that we used to, all of our underpasses used to be full, if you remember. None of them are full anymore, uh because we've made them off limits and we offered people housing. Uh I mentioned a number of the encampments that were big problems next to Bolero, uh San Luis, a number of others that we have been able to. Uh get people housed and make those areas off limits, some of those people, as we discussed. Move to other locations. Um but we also, we don't actually have any homeless shelters in Woodland Hills. Uh we.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm referring to the eight-one-eight uh building and the um.
Right, yeah, which which I don't I don't consider those homeless shelters in terms of maybe it's maybe a definitional issue. You're correct in that those are 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 locations that. Um in one case, the families who are experiencing homelessness will be able to be temporarily to get on their feet and the other one for seniors, some of whom. Uh were previously homeless will will have a place to live, but they will be paying a rent as well. Um you know, it's it's different than a shelter, uh but. Regardless, you know, your issue, you know, comparison to Orange County is an interesting one, because, you know, we. We've talked about the Judge Carter case a number of times. Uh and one of the things, you know, he settled twenty-eight cases in Orange County that were similar to what happened in in Los Angeles. Where they were able to make an entire city, a small city smaller than a district in LA. Off limits to encampment, as long as they provided a certain amount of housing, in the case of those settlements, it was sixty percent of the. Of the um of the numbers of homeless uh unsheltered homeless people in that city. And we're trying to model the settlements uh off of that, of the Orange County settlements here in Los Angeles. And ideally do it on a district-by-district basis. So that we could treat a single district in Los Angeles, which is bigger than every single one of those cities that they settled with, uh like its own city. We haven't been able to get that successfully done, but that's sort of been, and I've written a number of articles about this over the years and I've shared them with this group. Uh but that's ultimately where I think, you know, as a way we could make an entire district off limits to encampments. Uh if we were to actually have enough housing and services for uh the uh for those, you know, that sixty percent. And the settlement that we have with the city and in the in the LA Alliance case. Pushes us down that road and makes that a a an eventual possibility, and certainly I think that that's. You know, I agree with you that 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 ultimately would be the uh a way to go.
Kirk Thompson, you've been unmuted, go ahead with your question.
Hi Bob, uh thank you for coming to speak with us tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, happy to do it.
Great, great, hey, um. There's a couple of food programs in our neighborhood, one of which is Pastor April, the other one is. The West Valley Food Pantry, which I think you were neutral on originally, but. Peter and Joyce Fletcher helped get a get approved, and I saw your name actually on the groundbreaking for February eleventh. Um so I guess you're you're positive on that development now, is that true?
Well, you know, I I want there, I want it to be successful with the community, I mean, it's. That food pantry has been there for many, many years. Uh it serves a a role in our community, it certainly supported them uh during the during the pandemic, they served. Thousands of seniors, uh food insecure seniors in our community in Woodland Hills, many people who are. Housed and some of whom are part of this very organization, who were on hard times. Uh were able to drive through there and get uh critical life-saving food, uh the. The expansion in terms of the way that they were doing it was not something that was coming. Uh ultimately that came before me as a council member, uh so I never had a chance to formally weigh in on that. Uh but I I tried to express the concerns of the community and to talk about how if they're gonna do this, they need to do it in a way that. That uh does not expand the. Uh the numbers that they have, and they they agreed to that, that they're not. Uh they're not going to be expanding beyond what they what they've already been serving, but they're building a building so that. A lot of the uh the traffic can be taken off the streets and put into the back, so yes, I'm gonna go to their groundbreaking. Uh and you know, they they they're moving forward with it and I'm gonna do my best to make it a successful. Endeavor for for not just for them and for the the folks who they're serving, but for the entire community. And I live right there, I mean, I I'm a neighbor to that, so I I I see the impacts just like everyone who lives there.
Um let's see if we have uh Chris Rowe, let's see if we unmute you, Chris.
Hi, uh good evening, I I would like to bring up COVID nineteen, please. And the reason I mention it is. I believe that our elected officials across the board are misinformed and that. We have contradictory opinions in our physicians, our epidemiologists about this issue. And the I get the daily statistics from LA County about what the counts for the day are. And everything like that, but I don't know if you realize, Councilmember Bloomingfield, that. One of the problems we have is, A, I'm sure you're aware that there are some people who. Me contract COVID but never get tested for it. But the other concern is, I don't know if you're aware that. For example, I requested some of the free tests that were mailed by the post office and um. I don't know if you're aware that those tests did not report back to any agencies. And so then I only began ordering the COVID tests through Amazon that I paid for. That did report to the agency, so I believe that number one, that there's a huge amount of under-reporting. Of COVID nineteen, and that's what makes our numbers low.
Chris, we did we did a question from you, we you you.
Well, I'm asking if he's aware, if he's aware of this and if he's aware of. Wastewater testing and that we're not being made aware of the wastewater um. The levels it regularly in LA County, can he speak to that, please?
Sure, thank you, Chris, and and. You're absolutely right that there is a huge under-reporting, because as you said. Everybody's doing the home tests, I had COVID uh several months ago and um. You know, I found out through a home test and and. You know, it would not ordinarily get reported unless you actually make the effort to report it, ninety-nine percent of the people. Uh who do a home test are not reporting it, now, obviously, the the. There are some numbers, you know, the hospitalization numbers, the death numbers that are, you know, are reported. And 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 you also mentioned, there is a, there is a um a way that you can look at in the wastewater of. And you read about, you know, it's not, it's public, you read articles about it, about how they're able to monitor to some extent. The amount of COVID in the community because of what they're seeing in the uh through the wastewater tests. So that I'm definitely aware of that, I agree with you that it's it's under-reported, we you know. COVID has not gone away, it it has become endemic as opposed to pandemic. Um and we have to figure out how to live with it, I urge everybody to get vaccinated. Uh I I'm fully vaccinated and I still got COVID, uh and many people have. Uh and continue to and and you know, it is, you know, I I certainly. Agree with you that it is, it is, it is with us and we need to be uh very much aware of it.
We'll take two more questions, Keith will come to you first and then after that, Marty, go ahead Keith, you have another question?
Uh no, I didn't think so, but I did follow-ups in the chain for Bob, but let other people speak.
No, no worries, Marty, you've got a question, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, I do, um Councilman, uh as you know, uh. A couple of years ago, prior to the the COVID, uh the who was working with you and your staff through Andrew Pennington at that time. Uh on uh fixing the holes in the uh the twenty thirty-five Warner Center plan. Now, a lot of that just went by the wayside uh when Andrew left and also when COVID came. What what I personally am seeing, and I think a lot of people are seeing, is that uh. Um we're getting to a point where this twenty thirty-five plan, nobody wants to uh wants to. Follow the rules, they want to change them, they don't like it, they're not doing stuff, uh they're not playing fair on this. And uh do you think that the my questions are, do you think the twenty thirty-five plan needs to be. Uh revamped immediately, do you think it needs to be tossed? Do you think we need a new twenty thirty-five plan? And uh what kind of procedures do you intend to put in place to get this train back on the tracks that. Unfortunately, I keep seeing at virtually every plum meeting, uh that it's it's. Just going haywire and it's not fulfilling what it's supposed to do, thank you.
No, no problem, I appreciate the question, um. I mean, I I don't think it needs to be tossed, I think it's actually been incredibly effective at getting investment into our area and dealing with. Uh you know, helping us keep the density in the Warner Center area and take away some of the pressure. Of density in the surrounding areas, uh which was always a key part of the intention of the plan. Uh we have housing numbers that we have to hit by a state law and um. And the Warner Center is where the growth is is happening, I I think when you're referring to the plan that working part of. What you're, you know, you're driving at is that you want to see more commercial, less residential, uh because a lot of it was phased.
Yes.
And 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 I get that, and I mean, obviously, as you know, it's it's a market-driven plan. Uh and right now, especially with COVID, the market is driving toward residential, not commercial, in fact. We we are in a situation nobody would have ever envisioned when the twenty thirty-five plan happened with with COVID that. Uh the the um need and the the market for commercials gone way down. Because so many, you know, because people are working from home, so many businesses are are now um. Have changed their business plan, I mean, we still have plenty of interest in the Warner Center and businesses are coming here. Uh but but it's a definitely, you know, the market, COVID. Uh you know, took that trend that was already there that you were concerned about even before COVID, and it it uh. You know, it it juiced it up even more, um now, we have commercials been entitled and and um. And that's going to be built, I I'm hoping that the Cronky Initiative as well, with with them buying that big plot of land and doing what they're. Doing that will also include more commercial, I mean, the the practice facility itself. Um but I I agree with you in terms of the the mix isn't what we. Envisioned early on, but it was it was envisioned as a market plan and we have to sort of see how those markets roll out. So, yes, it can be tweaked and we can make changes and 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 my team will continue to work with you. Uh you know, on that, but I don't I don't think it should be tossed, I think it's still still productive and. And we, you know, we also have to look at these big market forces. And then I want to add one more, one other thing to Keith, questions kind of came to mind about the the. What's that like food pantry, the other thing is we did get them to stop the showers, so they're not doing showers anymore, uh which I think. It was something that people were concerned about and and there's a little bit of trade-off there as well.
Andrews, if you have a a question, you can be unmuted, go ahead. I see still have got your hand up. Uh if not, we'll uh uh move on at this point, I know some of the questions, a lot of the Q and A's have been. A lot of went on back and forth on some things and uh one of the questions I think Betty had had got, what had to do with the graffiti. That's showing up on a lot of the other fences and other locations too, that are creating problems, and I know there's a team that's around to be able to take care of those and. Can certainly call in on the three-one-one numbers to do that, but I remember um there used to be time when a lot of things were being posted on telephone poles and we came unsightly and what have you. And I think Jimmy Haun at one point, when he was a city attorney, said that those things are placed on the telephone poles or on the fences, what have you, considered to be. Just abandoned property and could be torn down and taken away, have you looked at any of those things with um? How the city might be able to handle some of the graffiti and some of those placard signs that are going up in certain areas, I mean. Certainly, I don't think there's anybody who complains about there being, you know, I I lost my child, I can't find them, or I lost my dog or my cat being posted up on. On a telephone pole, but it's the other ones that are the, you know, the advertisements for for things. Well, we'll get to you in a second.
He I I don't have a a new answer on that, I mean, you you kind of covered it in the sense that those things can be taken down. Um they're not, you know, you you can't legally put them up, you you can report them on on the three-one-one system. We can get, you know, try to get the city to react quicker under the sort of broken windows theory, you know, the faster you get them down. Um you know, I personally, when I see something that's illegal that's up there, I I'll take it down myself, but but you know, we all need to. To call the call those things in when we see them, in terms of the graffiti, it's the same, you know, it's very disturbing to see graffiti. Uh it really is, it's terrible for our our neighborhood, part of it's educating people, but part of it's also trying to react quickly. Um both from an enforcement side, catching people in the act, but also from a a cleanup side so that. Whatever gratification someone gets for putting graffiti up, they don't get it for very long because it's uh. Uh because it's gone, and then you have folks, I don't know if Sean McCarthy's on the line here, but he's always, he's like a one-man graffiti busting crew, he he's out there. Uh painting over stuff himself and you know.
This is good. Andrews, you got a question, you're unmuted, uh we're past the nine o'clock hour, so Bob's been staying off a few minutes, let's make this one quick and short so we can get back.
Okay, thank thank you, and uh good evening, Councilman. Uh my question is regarding the eight-one-eight hotel and specifically, what are the restrictions and qualifications to obtain housing? Um and I would like you to help, if if it's possible, set restrictions such as if a homeless individual has a criminal record. I would hope that this uh particular candidate would be disqualified, so that's my concern. Um and I would hope that uh this is something that you can take into account and um uh possibly. Give your two cents to see what we can do with this.
Sure, no, and and you know, again, the the eight-one-eight is is owned by the county and it's run by Hope of the Valley. Uh it's the the residents of the eight-one-eight are specifically families. So you know, that means a minor child is involved, uh I don't know what their rules are, we can try to find out with regard to. Uh you know, someone who might have a record, a criminal record, um they certainly. Do not allow folks who have any sort of uh. You know, child, you know, a a. A sex offense, because they don't allow uh folks like that in areas where there would be children. So uh but in terms of other offenses, I don't know what their their rules are, um. But we can get, you know, that's a great question for the service provider for Hope of the Valley. Uh to see what their what their rules are, they tend to be a low barrier, but again, it's it's a family uh focus, so. That hopefully gives some solace, and they also have to have security on site. Which is not there currently, uh because it's not a, it's not up and running, but that will be a nice improvement. And then the other thing, uh all of these, you know, the eight-one-eight, I was able to get a forty-one eighteen zone around it, so. You can't have uh an encampment within a thousand feet of the eight-one-eight.
Bob, we got one more question, this is from somebody who hasn't asked her, Gavin Stokes, Gavin, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Hey, thank you very much, you know, I know this is not as world affecting as homelessness, but. Uh since moving here from the west side, uh we enjoy, obviously, the lifestyle here in Woodland Hills, but. Interestingly, and one would never really expect this in a desert biome, but there is the massive mosquito infestation here. And I know there's a limit as to what you can force property owners to do or police their property, but. We've done everything possible to police our own property and look around the neighbors. And and still, we're basically denied access to our yard for a good portion of the year because of an intense mosquito infestation. And I'm wondering if uh there's any, anything we can do about it.
Well, you know, the the uh vector control, I mean, and it is a very serious issue, because it's not just about the annoyance of it, I mean, we're talking about. West Nile virus uh that is out here and and uh. You know, I I personally know someone who's lost their life because of of that, of West Nile virus and getting it through a mosquito. Uh so it's the county that that is in charge of vector control and um. But they will come out and they will um they will spray an area when you say that there's a problem. We can cite someone if they have a a pool or standing water in their yard that's causing this problem, so. Uh on a on a case-by-case basis, please contact my team and contact their county supervisor as well. Uh because that's, you know, we, there are some tools. Because that's, you know, we, there are some tools that we can. You know, I, I, if I could legislate no mosquitoes allowed in the, uh, West Valley, I would definitely pass that bill. Uh, I'm sure I wouldn't, you know, get any, any objections. But there, these mosquitoes are not very good at following the law. So, uh. Vector control, contacting us, and if you have any clue as to why. Where the standing water is. Letting folks know so that they can, uh. You know. Let the, the culprit know and, and issue a citation if appropriate.
Councilman, you've been very generous with your time. We've gone a little bit past the nine o'clock hour. Uh, want to encourage everybody to, again, as you just mentioned, if there's. Issues that come up, they should contact your office and they can generally be able to. Work them through the system. Look at three one one, three one one is a great way of being able to. Attack some of these things that are going on in your neighborhood. Uh, start reporting those potholes, uh, please. We're gonna find some more rain coming up this, uh, weekend, I think. And those potholes are gonna get worse and worse, but the city's out there doing work on that. Do the three one ones, let them know where it is. There's an app that's on your phone that can, uh, take a photograph of it and get them, uh. The GPS coordinates, they get right to it. And I found they've been pretty active on getting out there within a, a day or two days, of course, the range, it may be a little longer than that. But Councilman, you've been, you've been great with helping us with these things and answering the questions. Uh, for those, um, people that are not members of our organization yet, please. Consider if what we're doing is helpful to your community and providing information and assistance on things. Uh, please join us, W, uh, the triple Ws, W H H O dot com. Twenty-five dollars, um, for the household for a year. Appreciate your membership and your support for us on that. And Councilman, uh, as always, uh, thank you for. Your generous time and for answering questions and being, uh, straight up with us and letting us know what's going on. We look forward to working with you and, uh, as this year comes on to us and. Finding ways to make our community even better than what it has been before, and we thank you much for that. So applause to you on that and, uh, deeply appreciated.